Okay, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call our special meeting to order. The purpose of our meeting today is to discuss the deliberation on our candidates. We met on Monday with four candidates, and today we're going to be joined by Pat Melvin, who has helped us through this whole process, and lead us off on the next step. Good afternoon, Pat.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, and thank you again for allowing me to join you by phone. My daughter just got home from the hospital and is doing better, and we hope it continues. So, thank you for allowing me to be there for that.
That's great news.
Just to give you kind of a quick review for members of the public who may be watching, this is our second recruitment for the Cook County Administrator position. In the second search, we had 26 applicants that applied, and from there, we have narrowed it down to four that were interviewed just this past Monday, four good candidates. And so now we're going through the next step. The commissioners, during those interviews, were able to evaluate the candidates based on their experience, their education, as well as how they did in the interview. And so through looking at those three things and a lot of information, I should point out that there was significant confidential information that was provided to commissioners as they're making this decision. Based on that information, now we're going to be hearing from some of our staff, as well as from the public, and then we will be going into further discussion about who you, as a board, would like to extend an offer to. And I would also ask that you indicate who would be an alternate in case, through negotiations, we come to a standstill. That way, I'm allowed to go ahead and move to the second individual without having to get the board together. The second thing that I'll be looking for is authorization from the board for a negotiations committee to work with me and put together a tentative employment agreement. That will, of course, have to go to the county board for future approval, but we will be working on that, obviously, from my perspective. One of the things we try and do is we try and keep momentum going, and we'll try and wrap things up and have an agreement as soon as possible, because the individual that you do select typically waits to have something signed by the county board before they provide notice to their current employer. So, I now would invite either a staff member who wants to give the department head input, or if you want to take public input at this time. But those two things need to be discussed a little bit before the board gets into their deliberation.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble has a question.
Yeah, Pat. We talked at the time of the interview, concluding our interviews, whether or not we were going to have this discussion by candidate name, or if you were going to sign a number. So, just wanted clarification on that.
Yes. I've had a little bit of discussion about that, and I think if the board is comfortable, I think that you can simply refer to candidates by name and try to keep the conversation positive. Obviously, the individuals' names are public information. Candidates most likely will be watching, and will be able to, through discussion, decipher who is who. And so, just to avoid further confusion in terms of assigning numbers, it's my hope that the board would be comfortable just talking about individuals, and again, focusing on the positive of what candidate you think would be the best fit for Cook County Administrator.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Great question. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat. It seems a little unusual to me that we would select a second at this point. I understand the desire to keep it rolling and not delay, but that feels really awkward to me. Is that standard procedure at this stage in the game?
Yes. Typically, I do ask for a second. In some situations, there may not be a second. I ask the consideration just so that we can, you know, if things unfortunately come to a standstill with negotiations, we can move to that second candidate. But ultimately, it's up to you as the board. If you don't feel comfortable with a second candidate, or you would prefer for me to come back to the board, if things don't go with the initial selection, that's certainly something I can do.
Okay, and I guess maybe we don't have to decide that right now, but thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we have the candidate rating form where we ranked all four. Is it the easiest way for us to just put each individual? We'll say how they ranked people? Is that the next step?
I think he had asked for...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Yeah. First input from the public and from the leadership team, please.
I'm here for more HR reasons, but I am very much happy to share the feedback from Matt, known as the Management Advisory Team, which is comprised of the department heads. So, we met this morning, Matt met this morning, to just kind of like read the email that we generated and sent out this morning. So, the Matt met this morning to debrief the administrator interviews and determine if there is a viable candidate to recommend as our next county administrator. We were happy to see the quality of candidates. This round, but one candidate clearly stood out as the top choice. Kristin Trouble-Hilbersma best displayed the qualities we think are most important for the administrator job. She is curious and compassionate, but also self-aware and confident. She'd be a great fit for our organization, and Matt feels she would be an excellent supervisor, especially given her coaching experience and certifications. And then, Pat, you mentioned about kind of a runner-up. We did include that information in our email as well. So, if Kristin does not accept the position, or is no longer interested in the position, Matt would recommend Jeff Jacobson as the next candidate that could fill that administrator role. Jeff would bring a couple decades of government experience to this position, although it's a different type of experience, but he displays the ability to learn, adapt, and grow, and could be successful in that county administrator role.
Okay. All right. Thank you on that. We received all this this morning, but we were in the car going down to Harbors, so we weren't able to... I mean, I read it, but it was like, you know what I mean. Okay, Pat, we have that report.
Now, if you could, I don't know if Allison was thinking about providing just a brief summary, or if the commissioners have already reviewed the information that was provided and maybe want to just summarize some of that information from the public.
We'll have Allison do that again.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that again. I just have to, I think I recall what the feedback results were. I can just state, too, just the number of responses. So, from the first round, we had 51 total responses, which was quite surprising and significant. This round is actually a little less. We had only 15 online submissions and one on paper, so a total of 16 this round. But similar to the first round, I would say that the feedback was very consistent with the feedback from Matt, and just what I've kind of heard from other people and other employees that have watched and kind of formulated their own rankings, that the majority of the feedback would put Kristin as the top candidate, again, followed by Jeff. And I think there's still kind of a wide margin in terms of Kristin is definitely the very much the top candidate, larger margin to second to Jeff, and then the other two candidates after that. Kristin just kind of hit everything that the public, and I would say that Matt was also looking for, as I mentioned in that previous statement, of just how well-spoken and formulated, intelligent, her experience, her personal relationships. Like, she just was spot-on with everything, and even the public acknowledged that. And then, same with Jeff, similar to the feedback that we provided, kind of a little flat, like kind of non-energetic, non-emotional, I'm going to say kind of maybe dry in that sense, but again, very educated, very experienced, especially with city government, and could definitely have the skills to become more experienced and be successful in the administrator role. Those were, I would say, the top two identified candidates in terms of the public feedback as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Pat. Now, we have both Matt and the public.
Okay. And now, I think the board can go ahead and have some discussion. You've heard the information from the leadership team and from the public, and it seems to be somewhat consistent, so the board now can have discussion and share their thoughts.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similarly to the feelings of the public and our staff, Kristin was my top choice. I really felt she was extremely professional and a very effective communicator, and I think communication is something that we have talked about as a board, as being really important, not only internally for our organization, but also externally with the public. And so, I strongly support the fact that she seems to be in the lead, if you will, for this position.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree. Through the process that Pat shepherds us through, we go through a number of documents, including the initial cover letter, and then we have the resume, and then we have responses that come via a video interview, and then we do some other analysis. We ask for responses relative to core values, and so that leads us to the personal interviews with our finalists. And so, that accumulation of getting to know the candidate and their qualities, my overall impression, just using single words, would be professional, foundational, highly composed, focused, concise, polished but personable, high degree of self-awareness, high degree of social awareness, very relational, very articulated interpersonal skills, connected quickly with core issues, values aligned with ours, clearly understands the importance of culture, demonstrated commitment to growth through continuing education, proven track record, and convincing. So, my recommendation would be that we would offer the position to Kristin.
Commissioner Mills?
I agree wholeheartedly.
Commissioner White? Well, I don't. We had a candidate in Jeff Jacobson, who has a couple of decades almost of experience in administration. And we did have a conversation that we, prior to all this, that we wanted to have a candidate who was familiar with administration. Now, a number of things that I read was, I believe that Jeff Jacobson truly understands small communities in northeastern Minnesota. And my concern is, my recollection was that his demeanor and his presentation, everyone interviews differently, personalities are different, and that does not equate to being a good leader or a poor leader. He talked about interview, about working on the legislative level. He talked about having issues. He had problems he had to solve. He's sort of like a one-man band when it comes to city as opposed to the county. Talked about the fire department, the ambulance service, roads. We have departments that do all of that. And my question is that Kristin has worked on, in governmental levels, the government, where you don't have the same issues with money, you don't, your constituents. Who were her constituents? It's not the same broad range that one would have if you're an administrator in a community. You would touch base with everyone. So, the fact that she had more energy, and I'm not saying there's anything negative about that, but to choose somebody because of their interviewing skills or abilities, or how she comes across as perky and excited, whereas then you would have Jeff, who was just answering the questions. He's had interaction with tribal nations. He works with the legislature. He's had to deal with constituents. Inside county government, we have more layers, like with the HR. We have an issue, we have Allison. We have an issue, there are department heads. There are a lot more people. And I just don't know, Kristin made the statement that she was looking for a position because she liked to be the boss. She didn't want to be, she wanted to have more responsibility. And that concerns me. That really concerns me. And I don't know how much, I would like to know how involved either of them have been inside their communities, as in, we want a candidate who will be out there in the Cook County community. We want to see them, I don't know where we want to see them. We want to see them at concerts. We want to see them at restaurants. We want to see them at plays. We want to see them walking on the street, something like that. And how much, and from those interactions, that's how we are presented to the community also. We, as a board, we set the direction for where we go. Our county administrator needs to deal with more than just the people in this place. We've been fortunate, and I do disagree with Ann where she said we haven't had any, we've been eight months without leadership. I disagree. I mean, we've had two really excellent interim people, and so I think our culture, where we're going, is in a good place for someone to take over, to step in. And I think whomever steps in, we're going to hand them something really special. And so, I believe that city administration is on a smaller scale, but it is more similar than working on state level, part of the state bureaucracy than... I just think there's a real difference. And so, Kristin would be my second choice, indeed.
Well, I looked at her resume, her profile, reviewed her presentation for all of us to view again, and when she was here, I felt there were some words that struck me with her work in leadership, where she's come from, working with legislature, a big work with judges, although that's not part of our, you know, commission work, but she probably won't need to work with lawyers and judges along the way, that she's open and honest and makes a connection. She made a connection with me in terms of understanding and knowing how things work, and if she doesn't understand how it works, she'll find out how it's going to work. And also, in tribal relationships, she had some experience in that, so it wouldn't be starting all over again with that, a partnership with the tribe that she's worked with. And the last thing is that I think it's really important that we understand how they handle stress and burnout, and she had, she takes care of herself, and I think that's really important, whether, like you say, they go to a play, or they're part of the community. But the...
but the fact that she understands that there'll be days that there will be stress, and that how she emotionally will handle that. So those are the words for me that describe her. I would be in favor of her. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the conversation that the board has had along this process, and I think that we certainly learned, and it brought us together, not just as a board, but as a community and as a staff, going through that first process, and taking away and celebrating that coming together, which is what we're working to try to do. We want to nurture a culture where we're inclusive, and our voices are respected, and we respect one another, and we respect the community's voice, and we respect the voice of our staff. Leadership is huge. It is an umbrella that enables us to do what we're hired or we're elected to do, and so that leadership is a critical thing. I think it brings, certainly has been, a stressful thing. I think Commissioners commented about without leadership is in the context of the position. It had nothing to do with the statement relative to the good people that have served us. But having gone through this process and have listened to the voice of our staff, and one of the things I think that's consistent with all of the candidates is the statement that we want to feel heard, we want to feel valued, and we want a person that is not self-focused, but is focused and knows how to nurture and create a culture that makes us the best that we can be in what we do. And I believe that Kristin certainly is that person, and hearing the voice of all of the shareholders, stakeholders that have been part of this, I'd be proud to make a motion that we move forward and offer the position of county administrator for Cook County to Kristin.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to add something. I mean, I voted, yes, I voted, yes.
Raise your hand to say...
I did, yes.
Okay. So it was unanimous that we all agreed, okay.
But in essence, because I do support our staff and the community, but with this, and so, so the person coming in is getting the full support. However, I have grave reservations about how she will lead and how she will integrate. Simply because a person has a cabin in the west end of the county does not mean they understand a small community. So I have grave reservations. I voted yes. I think she has a lot of qualities we need from where we've come, but I think passing up somebody with almost two decades of real city experience or administrative assistance is, I don't know. But I will not, nay-say, I will not do anything like that if this is the choice of the people that will be working, answering directly to the administrator. As the county board, we do not, the administrator is the only person that we have any say over, and that person needs to take care of and help and guide the employees, not all the way down. I mean, it's actually, they work with the department heads, whom then need to have the skills to work with their staff. But ultimately, we are all working for the voters of Cook County, for the people that pay, and that's what we need to make certain, our new administrator comes in, understands that, no matter the good ideas, we have to keep coming back to the, for the welfare of everybody that lives in this county.
So, Pat, you've heard our vote.
Yes, thank you. Do you care to have discussion about an alternate, or does the board wish to move on to determining the negotiations committee?
We're shaking our head to say to move on to negotiations, yes.
Okay. Then I will just toss out the idea, obviously, when we put together the profile, there was a salary range that was posted for the position. What I'm looking for now from the board is simply an authorization for the chair, Commissioner Mills, interim administrator Rogers, and HR Director Plummer and myself to get the go-ahead to start negotiating with Kristin, obviously with the condition that it would simply be a draft that would be presented to the board at a future board meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair, I would make the motion to support the individuals that would be on that negotiating team to move forward.
Second. So you had a motion and a second to move forward with the negotiating team that Pat just mentioned. Any questions or comments? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you on that, Pat.
Yes, and one more point, if the negotiations committee, if they would have some time after this meeting to briefly chat, I would appreciate it. If not, I will certainly try and get something set up as soon as possible so that we can, you know, start those negotiations, so.
We can do that.
We will.
We'll call you back.
Okay, wonderful. Well, Commissioners, it's been a pleasure. I'm sorry that it took us two searches, but I feel very confident that, you know, you had the second search turn up some good applicants, and you've got somebody that I think will do very well for Cook County. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with you and keep up the good work. It was fun and exciting to have individuals so committed to finding a good county administrator and working with you through, you know, tweaking and making the right decisions. So thank you for your time and effort.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
We'll call you back in about 10 minutes, 15.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Just pull the plug.
Push the buttons. Because this is a special meeting, we do have another item on our agenda. This was brought before the committee the whole, and Commissioner Sullivan is asking us to consider and write a letter to the Heights requesting a staging out at the airport.
Correct. And just for the public, we know that the Heights groundbreaking occurred last week, very exciting groundbreaking for a 36-unit apartment on Highway 61 up yonder. And at that event, we were approached by Ideal Homes, Ideal and Dynamic worked together to create these modular structures. And the original location for the staging of these modular units, which was going to be at Taconite Harbor, was determined to not be possible because of the condition of the road, the poor condition of the road. Basically, the road would need to be rebuilt. And so it was asked if they could come forward to the Airport Advisory Committee to talk about possibly positioning these modules, staging them at the airport for a very brief period of time this summer. They could be staged and then would be taken to the site on Highway 61 to be placed. So on Monday evening, both Ideal Homes and Gary Lats, as a representative and project manager for the Heights, attended that meeting, and the Cook County Airport Advisory Commission supported unanimously that they would be willing to send a letter to the FAA asking and requesting, in a very short order, the opportunity for these units to be staged there. We have no authority as an airport commission or as a county to put anything on that airport property. That is up to the FAA. And so, within a few days here, what the ask is to look for a letter of support from the Airport Advisory Commission, from the Cook County Board of Commissioners, from the EDA, and from the HRA. And that would be sent in, actually tomorrow, to the FAA. It requires being sent in, because the FAA has a lengthy process for which they review these things prior to getting back to you. It's not like we're going to hear back next week.
Okay, so is it possible, because I'll be signing that letter, to get it out today, because tomorrow's a holiday?
Yes, absolutely. Everything will be ready to go at the end of the business day today.
Good.
So my request is that someone would be willing to make a motion, and that we would have support for a letter of support coming from our county board to stage those modules at the airport. This would be on the lower airport property. It would be east of that little house by Airport Road, or little structure, and it is an area of the airport that is not being used. It is still actively airport space, which is why we have to get approval from the FAA. We have checked with our highway engineer on how to transport the modules up there. We've talked to our ag inspector about some invasive species that are in the area. We have covered, I believe, every little detail that we can as we have examined this particular site.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the explanation, and moving forward with the project and trying to accommodate what we need to accommodate, I'd make a motion of support, as recommended by the Airport Advisory Committee, to send a letter of support so that we can temporarily store those modules on the airport property.
Support?
Did you have a comment?
I was just going to ask Commissioner Sullivan to tell the listening public, how many days would those, would they be sitting on the airport?
So the way that this would work is there would be a contract that would be written that would allow for a period of approximately two months for units to be staged. Units come up one at a time, would be brought and stacked up, and if you can think of a 36-unit apartment building, that's how big this pile of modules will be, it's quite large. Once they're all there, obviously having one location is great for security, that's a really important aspect of that. But once all the modules are there, if there's no rain, they will all be back down at the location of the Heights and placed within six days. So once they're all up there and they get everything figured out, six days, so it will go quickly.
No rain, no snow.
No snow. This is getting done way before the snow comes.
Still June.
Yes. I just have a question about when you mentioned security, will the letter of support also include any accompanying signage or security?
They will utilize all of that, and the only thing that we would do in terms of the county is just indicate that we would graciously accept the $5,000 that they are willing to give the airport. That can be used as matching funds for future projects. So that's the basis of the contract.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And with no further business, we are adjourned.
Now you can head back to Harbors for dessert.
You bet. Maybe you brought something.
Sheriff David's...
I gotta go eat this.
I only picked items that could be eaten.